Hey, do you want to do the prayer? It's liven up the meeting.
Get by there.
I just see someone going, every time someone walks by. Well, if your peripheral vision's good, you get it.
He's asking Billy Helm if y'all will pray. I was gonna have to ask who's with. Y'all ready to go? They got a song back there? Good evening. Good evening and thank you all for coming to our May Board Meeting. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please stand and join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God and one indivisible.
Please remain standing. We'd like to ask Billy Helm to come to the podium, please. Lead us in a word of prayer before we get started.
Thank you. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together and gain knowledge and wisdom, Father, and we thank you for the fact that, God, you're here in this room because they asked me to pray in Jesus' name, so I thank you, Father, for your presence here today. And, God, whatever's talked about here, I just pray that it will honor your name, and, God, that everyone in this room will know that you are Lord, and we thank you for that, and we ask that you bless this time in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Now I believe we're gonna turn this over to Dr. Lee, and then we're going to canvas the votes from our election.
Good evening, Mr. Murray and Board. A total of 1,473 votes were cast in the school board election held on May the 6th. Tommy Hazelton received 608 votes and Billy Moore received 865 votes. Billy Moore was re-elected for a three-year term for Bastrop ISD trustee place three. Molly McClure ran unopposed. She will also begin a new three-year term for Bastrop ISD trustee place four. Mr. Board President, at this time, I recommend that you accept the canvas of votes as presented and certify them with your signature.
Fantastic. I'll entertain a motion.
I saw move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the votes as presented by Dr. Lee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And now we'll call up Judge Chris Dugan.
In just one moment, you have certificates there to present there before you to both Billy Moore and Molly McClure, not Billy McClure, Billy Moore and Molly McClure. Not for this, no.
Billy dressed up and everything, you gotta take a picture. Billy won't be able to tweet it if you don't take a picture.
And if Judge Dugan would come before us, and he will now give the oath to swear in our candidates, our trustees.
All right, we place three first. You will raise your right hand and repeat after me. Do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of school board trustee for the Bastrop Independent School District of the state of Texas and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations. No thirty-minute speeches. Ms. McClure, if you will join me up here. If you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Molly McClure.
Aye, Molly McClure.
Do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of school board trustee for the Bastrop Independent School District of the state of Texas and will to the best preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state.
So help me God.
Three more years of hard labor, I expect that out of those.
We've been sentenced, is that?
That's like a sentence.
It's like a sentence, okay.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge Dugan. Appreciate you being here. I know he's honored to be here. He told me that before he got here, that he's honored to come do this. Yes, thank you. Now we come to the part where, once a year, we reorganize the board. And, you know, before we start that process, I've been able to work with five different boards in the past. And I think by far, this board seems to be the most cohesive, and that's not knocking any board members in the past because there's a ton of respect for those guys and gals that I've worked with. There's a lot of leadership on this board. We work together, our meetings are very professional, and so it's been an honor. But tonight, I'm gonna make a recommendation that Ashley become our board president. Not that I'm going anywhere, but I've served as president for seven years, and I think it's time that some of these other folks who have expressed interest, we reord. It's a good positive thing. I was told that to somebody, and I said, "Are you going away?" I said, "No, I'm not going away. I'm still trustee, I still get to vote, but I'm not gonna run the meetings." So I'd like to nominate Ashley for board president, and then I'll open it up for any discussion, but I will need a second on that. Okay? It's been moved and seconded for Ashley to be our new board president. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Congratulations, we got a new president.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. This is definitely a great honor and privilege. You talk about true leadership. James came on the board in 2006, so he's been on the board eleven years, and nine out of the eleven years, he's been one of the board officers. And he's been president, as he said, for seven of those years, and I know for a fact that a lot of those years, James stepped up when no one else wanted to be president through some really tough times. And so, not only politically, but with board relationships and things like that. So really appreciate your comments. And leaders develop leaders. James has a lot of knowledge, him and Mr. Peterson. They're the two longest-serving board members. And so, it's really amazing and a privilege to still have them on the board to reference back to them. So anyways, James, thank you for your service. We really do appreciate it.
Mr. Muchink, I want to echo that because it's not just as fellow board members, but as a service center team, as an administrative team from the school district, and on behalf of all the staff members at all the campuses, I want to say thank you to James for his years of leadership as the board president. It's made a huge difference. It's made our jobs easier. And so I know I speak for all of our folks in saying thank you very much. Your leadership.
You're welcome.
James. All right, at this time, I would like to open up the floor for nominees for vice president.
Mr. Muchink, I would like to nominate Molly McClure as vice president.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominees? If there are no others, I'd like to close the floor. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to second that motion before we close it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve Molly McClure as vice president. Billy's gonna second it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passed. Congratulations, Ms. McClure. And at this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations for board secretary.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Matthew Mix for board secretary.
Okay, any other nominees? If there are no nominees. Matthew, you'll say anything? This is what happens when you can't make the meeting, by the way. There is a lot of paperwork to sign. You can ask Mr. Allen and Ms. McClure and then others here. All right, so we'll close the floor for nominations. And Ms. Seacat, was that a motion? No, or Mr. Moore, you.
Mr. Moore.
I made the motion.
You made the motion. You will second it. All right, fantastic. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we got a board secretary. Great. At this time, we will move to a student speaker for character education trait for May, which is integrity. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Mr. Muchink. And each month, we're just thrilled and blessed to have a student come and share with us about the character trait for the month. In the month of May, the character trait that we're gonna hear about is integrity. And I want to make sure I say the right name, so say the last name the right way. So it's Natalie.
Rebellus.
Rebellus, very good. And Natalie is a sixth grader at Bastrop Intermediate School, and she's gonna speak this evening on integrity. Natalie is a member of the student council there at BIS and is in the GT program, Gifted and Talented. She challenges herself academically by taking all pre-AP classes and serves as an office aide. Natalie has been selected as a BMS cheerleader for next year. Congratulations. And is looking forward to playing volleyball in middle school as well. Her parent is Demarys Hernandez. Is Ms. Hernandez here? Please stand and be recognized. Natalie, the floor is all yours.
Thank you. My name is Natalie Rebellus, and today I will be talking about a very important trait for all of us to have, which is integrity. In the dictionary, the definition of integrity is having the quality of being honest, having strong morals, principles, and moral uprightness. To me, integrity means to do the right thing at all times and making the right choices even when people may not think it's right. I strongly believe integrity is very important to have and also teach. When you have integrity, people know you are a trustworthy person, and they can come to you with great responsibilities knowing you will accomplish them honestly. Having integrity won't always make you the popular kid, since a lot of us choose not to do the right thing, but it will most definitely pave your way to a brighter future. Integrity to me is very important because it lets my family know that they can trust me, that I will have the decency to say or do the right thing when I face a hard decision to make. It lets my friends know that they can trust me with loyalty, and they can rely on me to give them my honest opinion and advice so they can make the right choice as well. Integrity is seen less nowadays since making bad choices is an easier path to take, and people are getting away with it. Cheating on tests, vandalism, and bullying are just a few of the choices that people without integrity do on a daily basis, not knowing the harm they are causing other people, but most importantly, deep down inside themselves. Having integrity is super easy and it makes you feel so good. You can start off by simply putting a shopping cart away, back in its place, by returning extra money that is given to you at a store, and by helping out your parents and teachers even when it's not asked. To develop integrity, we must be internally honest because we can't be honest with others if we aren't honest with ourselves. You also have to know your rights from wrongs to use your best judgment during difficult times. Also, always remember, time will fly by, but integrity will always stay. So why don't you join me in showing and teaching our next generation the values of having integrity? I would like to thank my parents, teachers, and all of those positive role models who have taught me the importance of having integrity. And I would also like to thank you for taking the time to hear my thoughts on integrity. Once again, thank you and have a good afternoon.
Natalie, thank you for your confidence and your smile. It was wonderful. We really do appreciate it. At this time, we'll move into special recognitions. Dr. Lee?
We are gonna do some fine arts recognitions first. Normally, you would have Chico Portillo, but he could not be with us. So instead, you get me. So I'm gonna do my best to pronounce the names, especially of some of the students that I've never met, so I know that the directors will help me out if they see me struggling. So first, we would like to recognize from Bastrop Middle School, we have the Bastrop Middle School Non-Varsity Band who earned superior UIL ratings in sight reading, and the Bastrop Middle School Varsity Band. They also earned superior UIL ratings in concert and sight reading, thus earning the Sweepstakes Award for the year. Their directors are Sandra Sin and Alyssa Ramirez, and their student representatives, if you guys will come up as I call your names altogether, Jean Brown, Jaziel Laduna, Shuan Shuan Liu, Cameron Hernandez, Cassandra Roca, and Olivia Yeoh.
Unfortunately, the others cannot be here.
You're all here, most of you are here?
Most of us.
Great, are your directors here? Where are directors? Come on. And where's Nick?
So, again, we have Bastrop Middle School. Can we give them a round of applause?
Make your way right out through this door, and Mr. Spinata's gonna take photos of you guys.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for coming.
First, let's have them line up over there. The next group, let's have them come to the wall over there.
Right here? Okay. Next, from Bastrop High School, we have the Non-Varsity and Varsity Bands who earned superior UIL ratings in sight reading. Their directors are Kenneth Gilbert and Andrew Tuck. And their student representatives tonight are Jose Serrato and Francesca Ramirez. And if you guys would come right over here along the wall so we can give you a round of applause. Is Mr. Tuck here?
He is at our concert.
Well, I just want to give a quick shout-out to the Bastrop High School band specifically because we took the BHS drum line with us today that Mr. Gilbert arranged, and Mr. Tuck was there with us when we awarded the district secondary teacher of the year, the elementary teacher of the year, and the district paraprofessional of the year. It was amazing because they were doing the drum line all through the hallways, and the kids just thought that was great. It was really, really a lot of fun. So thank you very much for doing that. We also had the Bastrop High School cheerleaders with us as well, so that was great. Thank you very much, Bastrop High School.
One thing, Dr. Lee, before y'all leave, and I know I mentioned this when I came over and was honored to give you the 212 Degree Award a few weeks ago. And I believe that at that time, we talked about the fact that we had achieved the highest ratings, the one rating, the best rating for a band in some twelve or thirteen years. Is that correct? Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Next, from Cedar Creek Middle School, we have the Middle School Choir. They earned superior UIL ratings in concert performance. And their director, if you want to make your way, is Elizabeth Winslow, and tonight she brings with her Emily Kennedy. Congratulations, CCMS Choir. Next, from Cedar Creek High School, we also have the Choir. They earned superior UIL ratings in concert performance. Their director is Alyssa Hosking, and she brought with her tonight Sierra Ricketson.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And finally, we have our Cedar Creek High School Non-Varsity Band. They earned superior UIL ratings in concert performance. And the Cedar Creek High School Varsity Band earned superior UIL ratings in concert and sight reading, also earning Sweepstakes Award for this year. Their directors are Chris Mendez and Dalton Davis. And their student representatives are Eric Davis, Emily Evans, Jacob Evans, Devon Jones, Stone Jones, Jorge Mesa, Jordan Pedrosa, Nick Wensky, and do we have Brittany Nutt as well? Yes. Okay, CCHS Non-Varsity and Varsity Bands. Congratulations.
Once again, Dr. Lee, I want to give specific recognition to Mr. Mendez and the band. I know they had outstanding season from marching all the way through concert, sight reading, y'all did an outstanding job. Congratulations.
And now we have some athletic recognitions with our A.D. Bob Jones.
Good evening, members of the board. We want to start out today with Jaden McGee, his parents. Jaden was nominated and recognized, excuse me, at the National Football Foundation for Athletic Scholars Banquet. He was one of fifty student athletes in the greater Houston area selected for this honor. What's really neat about this honor, and Coach just gave me this, is his name will be inscribed at the College Football Hall of Fame in Atlanta, Georgia. Jaden has, he's not a very good student. 3.5 GPA, played football, powerlifting, and track in high school. He's a member of our StuCo, worked with Special Olympics, and he's gonna be attending the University of St. Mary in Leavenworth on a football scholarship. So we want to recognize him. And then a special recognition to his parents. Thank you.
Jaden, congratulations.
Next, we want to recognize the Bastrop Golf Team. Coach Watley has a special recognition, and it's kind of close to home, too. Ash, come up here.
Hi, I'm Ramonda Watley, and this is Ashlyn Watley. She's a senior. She was our district champion this year in golf. She went to regionals, she placed eighteenth, and she'll be playing at Ranger next year in golf, and I'm gonna miss her. I'm gonna start crying if I talk anymore.
Congratulations. And something really special there is, she was the district champion. I mean, in our new district, where everybody thought that we would be fighting from the bottom, we were fighting from the top. She was the district champion, and that's pretty special for us.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Next, we're gonna bring up Coach Fiddler and the Cedar Creek High School Track Team.
Hi, I'm James Fiddler. I'm the track coach for Cedar Creek High School. We had an athlete this year make it to area. He's a junior. Courtney Black, he made it in high jump, in triple jump, 110-meter hurdles, 300-meter hurdles, and a mile relay. He did an amazing job. We'll see him next year.
Congratulations, Courtney.
We were at the regional track meet, and Courtney, it was the 300 hurdles, right, that you fell? Yeah, he was leading the 300 hurdles in his heat and fell at the finish line. And his hand went over the finish line, and about seven guys went running by, and I'm thinking, we're okay, but in track, you have to get your torso across. So he didn't make the finals. Had a real, real great opportunity to go to state, but he is a junior, and he's coming back, so we're excited about that. Thank you, Courtney. And our final one tonight, we have, it's a new teacher, hadn't been around. I think we only hired him last year or so, Steve Mayberry. And Coach Mayberry hadn't been around very long. Coach Mayberry's gonna come up and recognize his athletes from Bastrop High School.
Didn't we see you on a billboard somewhere?
Yeah.
Hey, thanks a lot, guys. Like, first of all, I want to thank the board superintendent for allowing us to come and recognize our track team. These kids right here received, made it to regional and an area meet. I'm gonna call their names, this is not all of them, but this is who we have. A lot of them had other commitments that they had to be at today. Ashton Curry, excuse me. Ashton Curry, she was academic all district, made it to area in the discets. Renika Higgins was an area qualifier in the 200, regional qualifier in the 200, the 4x2, the 4x4. She finished third in the 200 in regionals, which was one of the toughest regions that I've been in. And I've been in a lot of regions, this is one of the toughest. And she finished third, she would've been to state, but how'd she do it in state? They take the top third-best time in the regions. And she beat region four, she beat region one, and the girl in region two, she ran a 25 flat. The girl in region two ran a 2487. And she got to go to state. But I'm very proud of the way she competed. She was in eighth place and wound up finishing third in region, so I'm proud of her. Lucera Martinez, also area in the 4x1, 4x2, 4x4. She was a regional qualifier in the 4x2 and the 4x4. Penille Waits was a regional qualifier in the 4x2 and the 4x4, and an area in the 4x2 and 4x4. Coming down to Reagan Carter. Reagan Carter got a couple awards. He was academic all district. He was Texas Track and Field Academic All-State. He was second-team UIL All-State. And also, he was in the 200 in area. He ran the 200 in regionals and the 4x2. Winning in the 200 put his hamstring going around the curve. So Reagan will be running at Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi as well as Renika Higgins. Bailey Chopper is a 400, got first in the 400 in district, area qualifier. We got Cole Tewell, is a freshman. He also was academic all district, as well as Bailey, academic all district. He ran in the 4x1, 4x2, and the 4x2 in regionals. Again, I'm proud of these young men, young lady, for the hard work, dedication, and the commitment they did to our program. Thanks a lot, guys.
We have, our middle school golf teams are competing. The boys are competing tonight at Mainer. The girls competed yesterday. And then we have one final event for the school year. We have middle school soccer Thursday night. So if you guys, you know, I think we're both sights. If you want to come out and watch a little middle school soccer, that's our final event for the school year for athletics. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Coach.
Dr. Lee?
Each year, our school district selects a Community Partner of the Year, and it's done by a, kind of a nomination process. I'm not involved in it, but it comes from our campuses. And this year, I don't know who the partners have been in the past, but I know who they are this year, and it's very appropriate. I've had the privilege of working with these businesses and this organization, this group, for this past year, since I've been at Bastrop ISD, and it has just been my distinct pleasure. I'm going to call them up to the front and then talk a little bit more about them. So, if I could have Becky Wumble from the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce and Jolene Yanee, who is with Cente Mortgage, but she's the chairperson of the Education Committee, We Believe in BISD. So, if I could have them come to the front. Keep going, ladies. And turn around and face me. All right. These ladies work tirelessly. They have regular jobs that they do, that support themselves and their families and the community, but they work tirelessly with We Believe in BISD for the benefit of the students and the teachers in this district. Countless hours of not only meetings, but of buying gifts, of arranging visits between our business partners and our campuses, of ensuring that things run smoothly, of making things very special for our teachers. Their whole goal is really to show our teachers and our staff how much they are supported by the businesses and organizations in this community. And it means so much what they do, and I know that they don't get often the thanks that they deserve, like many of the people in this room as well, but I'm so proud to present the Community Partner of the Year Award to We Believe in BISD. And I'd like to ask the board to come up and take a photo. And if there's anything, Jolene, as the chair of that committee, is there anything that you'd like to say about your work with We Believe in BISD?
It is, it's our honor to be able to serve and express just a small token of appreciation to the educators and staff of BISD. We have enjoyed our work, and we have enjoyed the connections that we've made between the business community and this school district.
Absolutely. Thank you. And thank you, Becky, because as the chairperson of the chamber, we wouldn't have, you know, this organization and this arm without your leadership at the chamber. We very much appreciate it.
And ladies, I say this, most of the ones that I get to go to, I try to get as many as possible to the campus visits, and I've said this to so many of our faculties, and Becky, you know this, and so do you, Jolene, that We Believe was a called the same thing, We Believe in whatever, town, district, whatever. They've changed the name. This is being replicated all over the state of Texas. It started here, it's being replicated, you know, you talk about this, it's a serious form of flattery, you know, it's copying great things, and so that's what's happening all over the state of Texas, is this type of recognition and partnership between the business community and the school district. So, can't say enough. We're going to be talking about some business partners here in a minute, virtually every one of those business partners is part of We Believe, so it's really, the whole celebration is about the folks who are all involved with We Believe, so we appreciate it.
Becky, was there something?
Yeah, I want to say, I'm the paid staff from the chamber. Jolene Yanee is a volunteer and has put in hundreds and hundreds of hours, and she's very passionate about this initiative, and is a volunteer and a business person who's giving up her time. I want to thank her personally, because she's the one that makes it happen.
Thank you both for staying there. Well, tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing some other special friends of our district. Here at Bastrop ISD, we know the value of the help that we have received from the businesses and organizations in our community, and we are deeply appreciative of this partnership, whether it's, you know, a contribution for the many student fundraisers that we have, or it's your support in other ways. We are deeply appreciative. And we are pleased to announce that the generosity they have shown is now being recognized at the state level by the Texas Association of School Boards, who joins us in recognizing your support for our public schools, and that's what tonight is all about. Tonight, we present a recognition packet to each of our 2017 Texas Association of School Boards honorees in grateful appreciation for all they have done for Bastrop ISD. Inside the packets that we will give out tonight is a letter from Tasby Executive Director, a certificate of honor, a window decal that you can put at your business if you'd like, showing your support of Texas Public Schools, and a countertop sign that we hope you will post as well, showing that you are a business and an organization that stands up for Texas Public Schools and for Bastrop ISD specifically. I will call up the names of each honoree who's here tonight, and you'll notice, I hope everyone got a Stand Up For Texas Public Schools bracelet and a lapel pin in addition to their certificates, which we will give them, and I hope that they will wear those proudly. So, as I call your name, would you, business groups, if you will please come up to the front and take your spot between Mr. Murray and Mr. Mousink, and we will take a photo, and we would be happy to get those out to you, for those of you who are on Twitter or in whatever social media you have, that's fine. We will be sending it out for sure. Okay, without further ado. And these are all in alphabetical order. Some of these businesses are not here tonight. First, we have the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce. The Bastrop Economic Development Corporation. You see Johnny? Boy, Johnny's in trouble now. Syntax Image Designs. I don't want to say HOG Ministries, but Heirs of Grace. Didn't see them check in. Independence Title. There she is.
Thank you, sir. You go first. Go ahead.
Our local Bastrop HEB Plus.
Ms. Wesson, how many years have you served? Six. Well, thank you. Two as president. No more.
Mr. Wumble, talking about giving back. How many years is Lockhart School Board? Too many. He's here, he's giving back, so thanks for that.
Do we have any community partners who didn't check in, and I don't know you're here? Okay, I think we got everyone. There are others on that list, as you saw on the screen as we went through, who were not able to be here tonight. Hold on a second. Hold on. Our community partner, We Believe in BISD, has requested that the We Believe in BISD team come up and take a photo, and so if you guys will hang out, and if We Believe in BISD will come up, and then we're going to give everybody, everybody one more round of applause.
While they're coming up, they're on safety things. I know as a business owner, there's a difference in their time and their payroll, and it's made a difference. We started this committee with the chamber, I know the Becky came and carried this, and Jolene's perseverance, and so many others, but it is making a reputational difference in our community, I don't know in our community, but within our state, like Mr. White said. So, businesses, thank you for your sacrifice and dedication.
Well, there are five and three, so it would be great if one of you could move over, but it's really okay. That is, goes so much better. That is go so much better. For our Community Partner of the Year, as well as all of the businesses that are here tonight, I just cannot thank you enough for what you do for our school district. A round of applause isn't enough, but that's what we're going to give you right now. Thank you. Now y'all can sit down.
All right. Yeah, we appreciate everybody being here. Each month, speaking of the chamber at our Chamber of Commerce luncheon, we have a BISD spotlight. It's typically one of our principals, but we also have folks from the service center here who help direct and help out all those campuses and support the students of our school. We had a spotlight presentation by Ms. Jennifer Edinburgh, our new Director of Student Advancement, and Jennifer is going to repeat that presentation for us tonight. Jennifer?
Good evening, Mr. Murray and the School Board. Okay, I'm just going to take this because it's easier since I'm tall and that's a little short there. Sorry. I'm going to talk tonight about Advanced Academics and the career in technical as what most people refer to as CTE update. The first thing that I'm going to do is we are going to start this little video, and it's about the history of academics.
The last significant change in the way we educated our kids occurred around 124 years ago. It was the dawn of the Industrial Revolution. Most kids were raised on farms and jobs were plentiful and predictable. Then in 1843, an educator from Massachusetts decides to visit Prussia on his honeymoon where he witnesses a brand-new type of education. Up until that time, education primarily consisted of smart people sitting around talking to other smart people. But after the Prussians were embarrassed in the Napoleonic Wars in the 1800s, this Prussian decides to institute a new type of education for every German boy from seven to 14 years old, which results in a more fit, more organized, more obedient army. Among his many reforms was this idea: to divide up instruction according to age, ability, and subject matter. Strange as it seems today, this had never been done before. This idea of teaching math in one room, science in another room, language skills in yet another, was totally new. Horace Mann witnesses this new educational model, and he's stunned. Inspired by what he sees, he brings these educational ideas back to the U.S. where it captures the attention of these men. Just like the Prussians, who were anxious to develop more obedient troops, these fathers of the Industrial Revolution were desperate to transform our nation of disorganized farm laborers into trained, efficient workers for their factory and assembly line jobs.
We divide the day up in high schools into bits of time, you know, into 40 or 50-minute blocks typically, and then we ring bells and people start to shuffle around the building and do something else. That's an organizational device. It's not an educational principle. And it is, in broad sweeps, a system that resembles a factory culture.
If you built a factory in upstate New York and another along the Ohio River, you desperately needed these workers to behave similarly, to know the same kinds of things. If high school graduates in Ohio could quote Shakespeare, but students in New York couldn't even write their own name, it was difficult to build a standard set of factories which utilized both sets of workers. That's when it was decided to form a committee called the Committee of Ten. The committee was tasked with coming up with a standard set of subjects every kid should know.
Ten university heads, in 1890, said, "In 11th grade, everyone should learn chemistry. In senior year, everyone should learn physics," and that it should be earth science. They came up with this whole trajectory calculus. And a lot of these subjects are great, but these priorities were dictated 120 years ago, 124 years ago.
Back in 1892, the Committee of Ten designed our nation's curriculum, and, for the most part, it has not changed.
The biggest employer in Baltimore 50 years ago was Bethlehem Steel Company. You could actually drop out of high school 50 years ago, join the steel union, get a perfectly average job, earning a perfectly average wage, which would entitle you to get a perfectly average mortgage to buy a perfectly average house with a perfectly average yard, to have 2.0 perfectly average kids, who would go to a wonderful, perfectly average public school. You could have a perfectly average retirement and have a perfectly average funeral. That is no longer the case.
The economy that we created over the course of the 20th century was an economy that needed a large number of moderately skilled people who could do the three Rs and who could follow pretty simple instructions. As we head deeper into the 21st century, I really don't think that's the case anymore, yet our educational system still seems to be focused on turning out people with that same relatively small set of skills. My fear is that they're heading into a society and an economy and a workforce that doesn't value those skills very much anymore. And I think we need to take a good, hard look and figure out what kinds of people, what kinds of skills are demanded in the technologically extraordinary society and economy that we're creating.
So as you can see by the video, it is time for us to think about education in a different light. And so with the merging of Advanced Academics and CTE together, BISD is going to be one step ahead. So I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on the Advanced Academics and talk about the Gifted and Talented Program. We are in the process of working on and updating a GT Advanced Academics Handbook that will have updated policies and procedures. We have established a referral and testing window for our GT students, which of course is going to allow more time inside of the classroom, which is one of the things that a lot of people have asked for. Revamping the pullout program and then adding additional push-ins, and then establishing a parent Advanced Academic Cohort with four scheduled nights, and they will be showcasing certain items and projects. And as you can see, we've already kind of started putting that together, and we're really trying to focus each meeting on a particular area of GT and the Advanced Academic Program. Then when you move into pre-AP, AP, and dual credit, we have already started the process. We have already revamped our summer assignments, working with all of the campuses to utilize the same policies and procedures when it comes to pre-AP, AP, and dual credit, looking at how students within the pre-AP and the GT programs are placed via subject area. We've also started the conversations with companies about coming in and doing after-school programs for our pre-AP students in grades five through eight through the Legos and with robotics. I have also started working with ACC on offering additional dual credit courses, and then of course, looking at other avenues besides ACC such as online courses through the University of Texas of the Permian Basin, and then through the Texas Virtual School Network, which actually Cedar Creek High School just received a grant for $100,000 for that program. Now you say, "How does this all kind of merge within CTE?" One of the things that when, through this process with my position, was how do we take core academics and advanced academics and merge them into CTE? And through, obviously through that video, you can see that things are changing, but unfortunately, most of us, I remember this as a student, I was trained that I'm going to take Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, and Precal. And we're still teaching Biology, Chemistry, and Physics, just like what the video was saying. And so it's taking CTE courses, for example, that can be utilized as math, science, and English and fine arts credits, and adding those into our career pathways so that those students are able to still earn those core credits, but those classes really focus in on that career pathway. And so some examples, for example, is food science. Food science is a great science course that needs to be added into the culinary program. Robotics, too, can now be used as a math credit. And then there's business English, which can be utilized as an English credit, which can be offered through our business pathway. And those are just to mention just a few. One of the other things that I think is very important is also offering CTE courses to our students with disabilities. And so adding in CTED courses that focus strictly on like culinary, business information management, floral design, being able to give those students a skill that they can go out and be productive citizens as well. Again, adding additional CTE career clusters, education and training. I think it's a great career cluster for us to add, for us to be able to partner within our own school district and have those kids be able to do practicums inside of our own daycare system that we have within BISD. Of course, adding additional certification opportunities, student organizations. I am a huge proponent of student organizations. To me, that is truly where your kids get their bang for their buck. I mean, and I tell people all the time, "If it wasn't for my FFA advisors, I would not be in education today." They are truly the two individuals that changed my whole perspective on education. And then of course, establishing a National Technical Honor Society and then doing a CTE Awards Night. Those are just some of the things that I think that you, when you mesh all of those together, it just helps both programs grow, and it helps our students to be better prepared, especially when we're offering them certification opportunities so that, because we do realize that not every child is going to go to a four-year university. And it's very evident that our students can have great careers and great lives after they graduate high school, and they do not have to go to a four-year college. Any questions? None?
I want to make comment. I want to thank Jennifer for doing this and then also kind of outlining what some of the things we talked about when we were bringing Jennifer in and talking about this new position. A position that's never existed in Bastrop BISD before. I don't know if it exists too many other places. And one of the things I talked to Jennifer about in many of the meetings we had before she came on board was, as I say it, and I use this term, blurring the lines between what everybody used to think as vocational and academics, because the world has changed. When I go out and talk to our fourth graders each year and do my futures or college talk with them, I talk to them about college, I talk to them about military service, and I talk to them about good-paying job. And I tell them, unlike boys and girls like when I was in school just a few years ago, at their age, you have to have an outstanding preparation in public schools or any schooling you do, wherever schooling, where you're getting your schooling, you have to have an outstanding preparation and a great education for whatever you want to do, any of those things I list. And that's important for them to know, because as Jennifer said, you know, we've got so many ways to offer these credits, which are going to end up being academic credits, through CTE courses, which are going to keep our students very motivated, because those are very relevant to those students. Still today, we have a hard time where some of our students understand the relevancy of algebra or some of the courses that we have typically taken over the last 100 years. But when you can say you get that credit in a career technology or a course that they're really excited about, it makes a world of difference for many of our students. So Jennifer, I wanted to say thank you for the work you've done in the short period of time you've been here, and we appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Jennifer. These are all very exciting innovations, and it'll be fun to see how they all fall into place. And as Mr. Murray said, the relevance and the fact that the students are going to see the application of those subjects in what they enjoy doing or what they, their desire to do it for their future. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barantos, do we have anybody sign up for open forum? Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll move to the superintendent and board discussion. Looks like there will not be a curriculum report this month. Financial report in regards to the budget, Ms. Callahan?
I do just have a quick update tonight. As you know, the legislature is still in session.
Okay. As you know, the legislature is still in session, so we're still not exactly sure where we're going to land as far as revenues. So I have a presentation. I'm mostly highlighting differences from the last presentation you've seen. And to start off with the calendar, as you know, Nancy had sent out an, I say invitation, but some dates for a budget workshop, which we're planning to have May 30. I think there is a quorum. So by May 30, I'm thinking we should know revenue estimates. The legislature does end next week, and I have talked to our legislative consultants, and they do think by the end of this week or early next week, there will be some decision on the finance. People have asked if we think there will be a special session, and when I've asked that question, they said, "Not in regards to finance, because if they can't come to a conclusion in the regular session, they wouldn't add it to the special session to just become deadlocked again." So hopefully, they can come to some agreement. The other change, June 13 will actually be the agenda review that month because of summer leadership I think the board will have. And so we'll have another budget workshop if needed. Of course, I'll give budget information and then of course, adopt the budget on June 20. And that budget adoption will be in our newspaper on June 10 for the public notice. So again, just to highlight things that have changed. So since our last meeting, I think at our last meeting in April, I had just received our preliminary certified values. And so this number has changed from your last presentation. And right now, I'm using a $3.3 billion preliminary property value, and I will say a couple of things. That includes, it's not 100% of the value that the appraisal district has given us, because as they said in their preliminary values, there's a large increase. They expect a lot of protests, and so, and I would never budget for 100% of the value increase anyways. And it also takes into consideration the Bastrop Energy Power Plant and any reduction that they could have to their values. Again, I've shown you this slide a number of times. This is our property values current for the current year, and then it also shows the CPTD values that the appraisal, or the comptroller assigns to us the same year, and that comptroller value is always one year behind. But as you can see, those values have gotten closer and closer together. I've shown this chart, and we talk a lot about it. But when values are growing as they are in districts, and we talk about state revenue decreasing, I put some numbers to it, but I also did a separate little slide just to show you that if we weren't in a legislative session, or if nothing happened in the legislative session and there was no increase, there was no increase to the budget, you can see, I put 16, 17 tax revenue, and I showed tax revenue and state revenue. So you can see, for tax revenue, we have a fairly significant increase, $2 million in our revenue we would receive from 16 to 17. But because of the high values from the prior year, we would actually have a decrease in $1 million in our state aid. So really, that just debts out to $1 million more to spend. And Mr. Murray and I talk a lot about this. Another thing to consider, again, when you're in fairly, you know, your property values are pretty level, that's not an issue. What will happen is if we saw another increase, even if we don't see another huge increase next year, the CPTD values will be much higher because the values are higher, and we could see another $1 million loss in our state aid for next year. And you have to consider that when you're deciding what you're going to approve in this year's budget. Raises, because raises continue, and not knowing what property values will do the next year, it's just, all those things have to be considered. And during the budget workshop, we'll look at the 18, 19 budget year as well as this year. So just kind of, it's not a fancy slide, but it does show you that when values increase the way they are, then you do lose your state aid, and it's quite significant. Again, I'd like to show our top 10 taxpayers, just to keep that in the forefront. And as you know, when there's a, when those taxpayers protest their values, or there's issues with their paying or not, then that can be problematic for the district as well. Legislative information, the House Bill 20 Legislative information, the House Bill 21 is pretty much the same. It's an increase to the basic allotment. They've made, there's been a little change as far as the projections. $82 per WADA is what is, is what they're showing in the preliminary estimates now. Last month, they were showing around 66 for 17, 18, and 67 for 18, 19 for Bassdrop. So it's a little bit of change. The Austin yield hasn't changed as far as the amount the district could increase. The Austin yield is not, is part of the general appropriations bill. So that general appropriations bill has to pass in order for schools to even run, or state agencies. So they could make a change to that, but it's not like House Bill 1, whether it gets passed or not. The general appropriations bill will be passed, and so it would depend on if they make a change to that. There's not talk that that will happen.
Hey Sandra, for the guest in the crowd, WADA, can you give an explanation of that?
The weighted average daily attendance, and that's based on your average, your regular, it's based on every, all the students that go to school, and then the weighted, like career in tech, special ed, bilingual, you get additional weights for those populations. So WADA encompasses all of those.
Thank you.
The Austin yield, I talk about that. It's not complicated, but it has to do with your level-two funding, which is your pennies over a dollar that the board, that our board adopted when tax compression happened. So that's based on the amount of money that the Austin ISD can generate based on their compressed tax rate. So that's where that $99.85 comes from. That changes, that can change from year to year, and it does because of Austin ISD property values. So just wanted to give you a little bit about that. I talk about it, but it's really just, it's a number and it's based on the Austin ISD's property values. So preliminary revenue estimates, again, just wanted to show those. I've got, I have this current year as amended current law, and I have the Austin yield only, and then I have the combined Austin yield with House Bill 21, if that were to pass, the committee substitute. As, when I talked to the legislative consultants, that's what they talked about, what districts are using really as the Austin yield, if we were to get down and really needed to pass the budget before we knew what the legislation, legislature was going to do. And no changes to these, just the debt service, because the board adopts it. But as I spoke with Mr. Murray and the board and the team, those values increasing have quite an effect on our debt service tax rate in that we could lower that, and we won't know that number until we actually get our final property values in July, when we get our certified values. And since we don't adopt the tax rate till September, it's not something we have to discuss now, but just knowing as tax rate, as the values increase, the tax rate can come down, and as we've done every year, when we can do that, we do. Food service budget, that's same as last time. And again, just finishing this budget process up, still monitoring the legislature, attendance, enrollment, and our values. Again, I think hopefully by May 30th, we should have a good idea of our revenue estimates. That's when we'll bring our recommendation as far as expenditures, what's been asked for, raises if possible, because it's, there's not a lot of, there's no need to bring a lot of recommendations until we really know where we're going to land. So that's all I have, unless y'all have any questions.
Sandra, Austin yield, is that just, it's a basis of comparison? Is that?
It's based on the amount of money that Austin ISD's values create, that gets them past their compressed tax values. So it's so that Austin ISD is not a Chapter 41 district, and it's based on that, them not becoming a Chapter 41 district.
Okay, okay, I see, okay.
Mr. Butey, before we move on, Panee, come up here and join us, will you? Panee is one of my student advisory council students. She was also recognized, if you remember in track this evening for many things. Panee is very involved in school, and she's on the student advisory council. Appreciate you being here, Panee. Unfortunately, honey, I didn't see you back there. I would have had you come up earlier, but you've been listening to everything that's going on, right?
I thought I didn't want to sit up.
So you're going to hold down the fort. You're going to hold down the fort for the student advisory council by yourself, but I know you can handle it. I know you can handle it. So I just want to make sure that Panee knew she could come up here with us.
So I got a question for you, Panee, but first, Ms. Seacats, did you have a question for Ms. Callahan?
On the, when you were talking about the, the million that we were, we would lose, and then with the tax rates either remaining the same or going out, we could lose another million the next year. So that would be, that would be money that we would use for raises that could be taken away the next year, is that?
As possible, depending on how the values, and how the comptroller values our property.
Yeah, and it's a good point, because, you know, of course, we're looking at some, as y'all see in the budget workshop, when we meet, again, we get more in-depth of the budget, where we're making some changes to how we utilize our FTEs, the schedules we have at some of our campuses, because like so many things in the past, and especially in 2011, when we were cut drastically, like so many people in the state, we had to take care of ourselves. And that's what we're trying to do now. We're trying to gain some additional revenue internally, so we can still possibly give a raise to all of our staff members, because we can't rely on the state, unfortunately. So Kelly, yeah, that's a good point. I'm glad you brought that up. But, because you can't always, and as Sandra said, and we talk about this all the time, it's like the last several years, we've asked the board for a decision package. It's always something, as you, if you recall, I always talk about it, it's something that doesn't have a life each year. It's got a short, it's got a long shelf life, whereas personnel and salaries are a recurring cost. So we have to, we have to know we're going to have that amount of money each year when we're looking at salaries, that type of thing. So I appreciate you asking that question, yeah.
So Panee, is there anything that you've heard tonight that you have a question or want to give any input on so far, if someone catch you up?
No, but I really thought the education thing that you talked about was pretty cool, because I can kind of agree with like, the, like how in science, how you have to take like chemistry, or biology, chemistry, and then we have to take like physics. But now, like, it's not like expected a lot to take physics, like we have choices like micro or anatomy, so I thought that was pretty cool. Yeah, that's.
That's good.
In the finance part, I really don't know what's going on.
We really just need you here at the end of this meeting, go raise a million dollars for us.
Yeah, Panee, if you make me feel any better, there's a bunch of people down in Austin who don't know what's going on either.
Right. Thank you for that input. At this time, we will move on to the personnel report, which there will be no report this month. Next will be the communications and community service report. Dr. Lee, welcome back. Can Mr. Murray now sit here for this?
Yes.
We all right?
Yes, you may stay seated.
So hopefully, you all have in your board packets both the narrative report, and then you're seeing this up on your screens to make it easier. I gave a strategic action plan update back in February. So this is really an update since then, okay? So I just wanted to remind you of what our four strategic action plan goals are. To develop and maintain a system of instruction that differentiates for every student's needs. To increase the effectiveness of communication throughout the BISD community. Recruit, equip, and retain staff to increase instructional continuity and quality. And to strengthen and develop partnerships with students, parents, businesses, and community members in order to empower learners' success and productivity. So those are our four goals that will remain over the course of this strategic action plan. And then each year, we set, each year, we set, come on. Performance objectives. So these were the ones that we set for year one, and that's what I'm giving you an update on this evening. So the first goal relates to instruction. So just this week, we launched a student survey to ascertain their perceptions of their learning and to diagnose the needs going forward. We're trying to differentiate for each student and meet them where they are. Also, the disciplined task force was established this year, and they identified professional development needs in the foundational curriculum, as well as in social, emotional learning, and that is planned for the fall of 2017. The self-assessments that we had planned for the spring, for the teacher and leader profiles, were not able to be completed, because so much attention was really put into the curriculum model that I'll talk about in just a second. And so those will be moved to the fall of 2017. So the comprehensive instructional model that we've been talking about is now complete, so we'll give a round of applause for CNI, because they put a lot of work into that. It encompasses eight teaching, wait a minute, give a round of applause for CNI. It encompasses eight teaching and learning strategies called the Big Eight, and they will be rolling that out to the board, presenting that to you all in August. This summer, our department specialists will meet with the curriculum councils that they are currently forming as we speak, to train on the new instructional model. In communication, we have definitely improved our quantity and quality of social media engagement. Those are just some recent analytics, and you can see that we are up in all areas in our engagement with our community on both Facebook and Twitter.
On that Twitter, has Mr. Moore been beneficial to that for you?
You know, I don't think any of these would be up were it not for Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
So we appreciate that very much.
In the middle of that also, Chris, Panee, have you taken that survey? Have you had access to that survey yet? The student survey that Dr. Lee was talking about?
It just went out, what's, yesterday.
Okay, so show up.
On the 15th, yeah.
And then I'm just going to ask you, so how do you typically get your information about the things that are going in the school district?
Well, I check my email.
Okay, email.
Usually it goes out on that. And our English teacher, usually like we do our surveys in that class. I don't know if like that's kind of weird or something, because it's like English, but usually.
Typically how it good.
Yeah, or in social studies, like Mr. McCurry, he'll allow us to take surveys, because I know like AP, they took a survey and I was in the class, because I take APC, but our class is over, so I just go in there to sit and listen. And he had them take a survey, like if they were like going to be like a liberal when they grow older, like, just to like, I guess, I don't know, it was like some weird stuff. I don't know, he had them like answer questions and then we talked about it like in discussions, so I thought that was cool.
So social media wise, I mean, other than email, how do you typically get your information on social media? Do you access much social media? Twitter?
I have Twitter.
No?
And I don't use Facebook.
Instagram or anything like that?
Always on Snapchat, so.
Oh, Snapchat, there you go, okay. I was getting there, I was going down the line, yeah.
So Dr. Yu, in the past, like these surveys, is it, in y'all's staff meetings, is it encouraged to try to get the kids to, I know you're not there, you know, this year, but, and I'm just seeing Mr. Brown, but, and those things that are kind of encouraged, the staff encourage the children to take them?
Yes, sir. We, campuses have a opportunity to send those out however they need to. Most of them come through English classes, because all students take them.
Okay, that's good to know.
And Tyrell, just let me know that the surveys were sent to campuses yesterday, and the campuses are deciding when's the best day for them to roll it out, based upon what's going on on campus. So CCHS may not, and the high schools may not have, BHS may not have received them yet. So sorry. We've had significant content creation, which I hope that you've noticed and enjoyed, both stories and videos as part of our BISD newsroom goal, and more positive stories about the district in the news, including TV and print media. As you saw tonight, we definitely are continuing to value the community collaboration, and we solicit feedback regularly. The district of innovation process, the feedback form that we used, it was open to the community, our parent and student surveys, which we use regularly. And then recently, we sent out an ambassador program evaluation to solicit feedback from the people who have participated in ambassadors these last two years, as well as their administrators. And we try to now make everything available in English and in Spanish, and that's just another improvement that we've made. The written formalized protocol is still in process, but is not yet completed. Meeting that goal is still planned by the end of June. And we are continuing to find ways to improve internal communication. That's definitely something that we need to work on, and that will be a focus area for us going forward into next year. Our third area is in recruiting and staffing. Those folks have aligned their department's mission with the strategic plan, and that is, the mission of the Bassdrop ISD Human Resources Department is to attract, support, and retain the top talent in public education. And I really personally like the fact that they included the word "support" in there. It's one thing to get teachers here, but if you don't take care of them once they are here and to support them, then, you know, it doesn't necessarily make a difference if they leave us. And Tyrell has become a Twitter beast. He has definitely increased the social media use for the HR department, and that, I think, has made a big difference in our recruiting efforts. They've used that both for posting jobs, as well as in promoting the district. And HR and communications has tried to work together to get all that job information out. We held our first job fair, had 155 candidates pre-registered, with additional candidates arriving the day of the event. And improvements, we were talking that day, TK did such an amazing job putting that job fair on. It was incredible, and deserves a round of applause, for sure. Our improvements are already being planned, such as an area where we can have vendors that would be important to prospective candidates, whether it's real estate companies, health and fitness vendors, recreation-type information, so that someone who's considering Bassdrop ISD has all of that information for our job fair as well. The HR department participated in nine other job fairs in addition to the one that we hosted, and has implemented new recruiting and hiring tools that you may have heard of, the EPI Universal Screener, which is used for both teachers and principals, and Spark Hire, which allows principals and administrators an opportunity to do video interviews to help further the process of screening our candidates. This summer, we will implement the Dale Carnegie 12-week training course in Human Relations and Effective Communication Skills. And the goal is to select certain instructional and administrative staff and to equip them with more tools to be successful. That will start in June and run for 12 weeks. In community partnerships, as, again, as you can see tonight, our relationships are strong, and we are really proud about that and want to continue that. For sure, our partnerships with the Chamber, the Rotaries, Community Cares, the BEDC, the City, KBCB, and BEST, all of those are really, really important. We've had media stories that have specifically focused on community partnerships, such as the First National Bank story in Mina, the Tough Cookie Art Partnership with BHS art students, the BEDC and all the work that they did on Youth Career Day. All of those were really important. And I don't know if you all heard about the last city council meeting from last week, but the City of Bassdrop is going to be partnering with us to create a student leadership development opportunity similar to what Mr. Murray and you, board, that you do for our students with the Student Advisory Council. The City of Bassdrop is going to be doing the same thing, to give our students a leadership development opportunity with city council and the mayor and the city manager. So we're very, very excited about that. It's going to take months before it's up and running. We'll be doing all the planning phase over this next six months or so, and then we will be able to implement that for high school students across the district. We're in the process of doing alumni profiles, and those are expected to be completed by the end of June. And again, this is to highlight our relationships with the business community and ways to give back to and be involved in the school district after you are, you know, you've graduated and you come back, or you live in the area, ways that you can continue to be involved with your school. We had a second CTE tour planned for this spring, but that did not occur, and that will be an area of focus for next year that I'm sure Jennifer will happily take on. She is looking forward to being the organizer of that event, which she just found out about. And then we want to continue having, you know, educating our community about the programs and services that we offer and how that relates to employers in our area. The, Mr. Murray and the leadership team, the cabinet, currently working on year-two performance objectives. Again, the four goals will remain the same, but the year-two performance objectives will change, and we look forward to presenting those for your consideration in June. Are there any questions about anything that I said?
Dr. Lee, when, with the Big Eight that you're bringing out, when are the teachers going to be trained on that? Is that part of summer PD? Or?
The council that they're putting together, the specialists are going to work with their teams that they're forming to train this summer. And then we will roll it out in August, but Panee or Dr. Hewitt, either one of you want to speak to when teachers? either one of you wanna speak to when teachers will be trained?
There's a couple of days planned in July that they just put into Edgemore today. The information went out to campus principals Friday afternoon, so teachers are starting to hear through their campus administration about those opportunities. We're not rolling out the campus, I'm sorry, the curriculum management plan until the August principal meeting, which is August 1st and 2nd.
So, teachers will get this coming into the classroom in August?
No, during new teacher in service and district in service, they're gonna get more training at that time as well.
And we're gonna support it throughout the year.
Any other questions?
I think this is great timing for the rest of the Board. We're kind of shooting for August to do some Board goals and get together. So, Ms. Barantos will be getting out some options for us, so we can tile this into, it'd be really good.
Thank you.
One thing, Dr. Lee, can you let us know, I think I'm friends or Twittered in on everything, but how many different sites are we on? I get all Tyrell's stuff, just wanna, I like reading.
Oh, we have numerous Twitter accounts. Now, the district has one primary, and then we have certain individuals in the district leadership who have accounts, like Mr. Murray has one, I have one.
Oh, I follow Mr. Murray.
But we have, we have numerous campuses that have, and the numerous organizations within a campus, whether it's athletic teams, cheer, National Honor Society, student council.
Is there a list of that?
Yes, I do have a complete list.
Can you maybe forward that to Nancy?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Do you have tweet training?
I was just about to say, I see our IT department smiling back there. We need to get everything going here if we can.
I can definitely provide that for you, just, it's real easy, real easy. You too, okay. We have two registrants already, awesome.
Three, there we go, all right. I haven't participated. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. At this time, looks like Operation Police Department report, doesn't look like we have one this month, but do we have the chief smiling over there? Are we good?
Smiling.
All right, with a thank you for what you and your officers do, we really do appreciate it. So, all right, we'll move into consent agenda. Would any Board member like to pull any of the additional consent agenda items for discussion? All right, if that's not, then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So, move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. Action items, Mr. Edwards, consider approval of local innovation plan. This is about a three-minute report?
Yes, sir, and then a little bit more.
A little bit more, we look forward to hearing it.
Can we get that PowerPoint up? Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Murray, members of the Board. I'm here this evening to seek approval of the proposed local innovation plan. As soon as we can get this loaded up here. To the first slide would be great. Trying to jump me ahead. All righty, thank you so much. As you all know, the local innovation, the District of Innovation is something that was created in the legislature to afford local school districts in Texas flexibilities or opportunities to move away from the education code that we believe impede the local operations or academic progress of our kids. And so, what we did is, back in January, we started a process. We met with the Board to inform them and ask them if this is something the Board would like to consider. Then in February, and in January as well, we started meeting with teacher organizations, the group that we meet with on a monthly basis, we met with our district leadership team, and we also met with the District Performance Committee. We followed that up in February with a Board resolution that the Board passed to proceed. We'd like the idea of the opportunity to seek a District of Innovation status. There was a public hearing held that evening, as well as the local innovation committee was appointed. So, then the work really started then. And the local innovation committee met on these one, two, three, four dates, but there was so much more work that went on behind the scenes, they came so prepared. And I do wanna take this opportunity to thank every member of that committee, there was 57 members, the majority comprised of teachers that pitched in on this. We have some of our members here, I'd like to thank them for their participation, a lot of our administrators that participated. Because while it wasn't always comfortable, because it was healthy conversation in that room, there was also, people came well-prepared, they'd studied other innovations from other districts, and so, we moved right through the process. Then, on April 11th, that was posted for 30 days for public review and comment, and it's still posted today, receiving input. And so, then the next step in the process was last Thursday, where we get together and we have a public meeting, and the committee gets back together and eventually votes on the innovation plan that was created. So, we reviewed the input, discussed it, had some more very healthy conversation regarding the innovation plan, and eventually, we took the vote and it passed at 27 to 7. And so, we're here this evening seeking approval. So, what I'd like to do is run through the innovations with you, or the exemptions that the district is seeking. The first one has to do with certification requirements, and I know it's hard to see. I took the PowerPoint from the actual website. But as you'll see, and it's very timely, as Dr. Lee presented the Strategic Action Plan, every one of these is tied to a goal, and it also identifies the education code that we are seeking exemption from, and what that current requirement is and what we plan to do with it. So, the first one has to do with teacher certification. And Ms. Edinburgh presented earlier today on career and technical education. And currently, teachers have to be certified to be hired in the school district. But yet, we have a difficult time at times finding science teachers or math teachers at the secondary level. Yet, we have engineers that are looking to come in to the profession, or we may have an industry expert in career and technical education that we may be able to hire. So, we'd like the opportunity to go ahead and seek these people out, employ them, and then train them. And we'd still expect them to get their certification, but in three years, as opposed to the first year like it currently is. And we think that we can gain some advantages in widening our talent pool and also working with them to retain them as well. The second initiative also has to do with certification, and this has to do with certification from out-of-state people. Currently, if you're an out-of-state certified teacher and you come to Texas, we can employ you, but you have to be certified within that year. And so, when you think about someone relocating, the financial expense that goes into paying for your certification to get certified in Texas, we thought it'd be a better idea to go ahead and take state certified teachers and international teachers, as the committee discussed it, and work with them, and give them three years to attain their certification. And ultimately, of course, they would have to be Texas certified. The next one is probationary contracts. This is, would not affect any of the teachers in our current school district. This is only applies to a group of teachers that come with experience from other school districts. If they've taught in another school district five of the past eight years, we employ them, but we can only put them on a probationary contract for one year. And sometimes, as people come and we're working with them on the Bassdrop curriculum model and things that we do here in Bassdrop, at the end of that year, we wanna extend that time to put them on a second probationary so that we can continue to work with them, again, as part of our retention methods, to try to keep teachers here, instead of making a decision prematurely. So, we wanna continue to work with them. The next innovation is, can you see that far? Oh, performance appraisals. The district currently, the state lines out a, what they call the T-test, and that's the assessment method that's used for teachers, or districts can create their own. The exemption that we're looking at, considering here, is not to reinvent the T-test or do our own model. What we wanna do is take the current T-test and make some modifications, because our principals and our teachers have found it very time-consuming and somewhat cumbersome at times, without removing any of the rigor. It's a good, it's a good implementation, and there's a good, good objectives in there, but what we wanna do is work on how it's implemented in our school district. So, we'd still have walkthroughs and goal-setting sessions and reviews at the end of the school year as well. Along with this, we believe that freeing some of that time up allows principals and administrators to work more with teachers, the new teachers and the teachers more in need. And so, along with this, we'd also, we have this ability now, but we haven't implemented it yet, is teachers that have had three years of successful teaching experience on the appraisal, we would allow them to sit out a year on appraisal cycle again, so we can focus more on the new teachers, as well as the teachers in need of assistance. The next one is a transfer student. Bassdrop ISD, like other Texas school districts, accepts transfer students from other school districts for various reasons, whether it's a PEG school, and they have a right to go to school that's not PEG, is an example of that. And what happens is, the law has been interpreted to mean that once a transfer student comes here, they get to stay here for one full year. And unfortunately, at times, we have kids that'll transfer here and they'll get into some trouble, either sent to the alternative school, their absentee rate is chronic, and the law's interpreted that we keep them for a year. What we wanna do with this exemption is say, no, if you're running into these kind of issues and you're a problem in our school district, we wanna, we wanna go ahead and revoke your transfer during the year.
Does it transfer within district or out of district into district?
We're talking about out of district to the inside of the district, yeah. If they live in our district, they're ours, and we'll continue to work with them as we always do. The next one created a lot of conversation, it's the first day of instruction. Currently, the law states that you cannot start school before the first, I'm sorry, before the fourth Monday of August. And this year, the last Monday, lost, caused us to lose five days of instruction. And so, what we're seeking here is the ability to be more flexible with that and start school earlier than that. Now, when we read through the commentary, a lot of the commentary centered around, oh, well, they're gonna start school much earlier, and they're gonna keep pushing it forward, and, you know, you hear about the tourist industry. However, we put the claim in there that we wouldn't start it before the second Tuesday of August. And this year, if you look at the calendar, it's exactly the same date almost that we started this year's calendar. All we did was move it back one week, so we can start instruction with students. And we can, and we're gonna vote on the calendar later if this is approved, well, either way, we'll vote on it. It also helped us balance the first and second semesters and put some professional development throughout the year as well. Minimum attendance for, for, this has to do with the compulsory attendance law. All students have to attend 90% of the time, or they have to make the time up. But we do have very unique situations where kids, sometimes very talented students, very strong academic, they have activities outside of the school that take them out of school, and then what we do to them is, they're excelling academically, they're doing their enrichment activities, whether it's academic or athletic in some cases. Then, what they have to do is come back and do what we call seat time. Instead of, instead of even allowing them to pass because they've mastered the curriculum, we make them come back and either do community service and wait. And this will be monitored by the campus principal in very unique situations. What's important on this one is, because some of the commentary was, well, that's gonna hurt our attendance rate. It, this has, it will not eliminate the compulsory attendance law. It will not affect that, that's not the intent, or any UIL rules. This is for very unique situations. And then finally, Designated Campus Behavior Coordinator. Legislation had passed recently, in the recent past, that had each campus designate one person who was responsible for overseeing Chapter 37, which is the discipline. And it's not to say that other administrators couldn't do discipline. What it said was, that person coordinated the efforts. What we wanna do is get exempt from that, so that we can assign that to each one of our principals, so they can have better relationships with the students and work more closely with them and do all the data instead of passing it on to somebody else. So, that is our local innovation plan as proposed. I'd be glad to answer any questions or listen to any comments.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes, sir.
Who will be monitoring and, you know, bringing suggestions that this plan needs to be tweaked or making sure this plan is being utilized correctly?
That's an excellent question. First thing I would say is, the plan is in place for five years. Unless something happens that we lose, we go below academic standard, then automatically, it's done. The committee can be reconvened to either drop one of these initiatives, if we don't think it's being effective, or we can come back together and go through this process again to add more initiatives, should we do, should we do that. So, we'll monitor it through the progress of how successful is it being, and then we'll reconvene the committee as necessary.
I served with DOI, I wanna say, the first night that, the first night that we were there, Barry asked everybody to stand up and introduce themselves and say something special that had happened. And I was touched by the fact that by and far, our teachers stood up and talked about something that had happened in their classroom. Something innovative that had happened in their classroom, not their personal life, not their, but, and to me, that just showed their commitment, not only to this process for DOI, but their commitment to their classrooms. So, I just wanna encourage, through this process, that we keep our teachers, we keep the lines of communication open
Absolutely.
on how we're enacting or implementing this process, and that, you know, that we just keep the lines of communication open.
And I appreciate you saying that. As you saw in the, in the goals of strategic design earlier, that's one of our primary goals in our district, is to improve the internal communication. We recognize some of that, and so, as you saw Dr. Lee present that, so.
Right, thank you.
Just wanna drive that home.
And Mr. Edwards, I know that we have a few people in the crowd, but I'd like, I know we're live streaming as well. And so, I know that the community did turn down some bonds back in November. And so, especially with the TRE, would give us some monies to be able to do some of these things and have some flexibility. Well, without that, we have to exhaust all resources in trying to come up with innovative plans and flexibility. So, we really do appreciate, you know, the understanding of the teachers. We wanna keep the communication open. This Board is open to any suggestions. Mr. Murray has asked the superintendent, just, you know, if everybody would just keep communicating, it'd be very helpful.
Sir.
And I'd just like to thank those members of the community that are here, of that committee, that are here, and all the hard work, because obviously, that was a lot to untangle and then to come up with a good, a good solid plan that really meets a lot of needs, and I think will give us the flexibility and is unique to our district. So, thank you so much for serving, all of you.
And I'd just like to echo that again, because it's a very complicated process, and this is a very comprehensive outcome that we have here, that you have to look at the law, the current policy, and work your way through that. And this committee, we even had to schedule an extra day, and they came on a Monday, just to get this finished up. So, again, I wanna thank them as well. So, at this time, if there are no other questions or comments, we recommend the approval as presented.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the local innovation plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the local innovation plan.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, local innovation plan is approved. Barry, thank you for all your hard work and leadership, and others too.
Thank you.
Team here.
I have the next agenda item, so I'll just wait.
You do, I was just looking.
Reintroduce me if you'd like.
Absolutely.
Hi, I'm Barry Edwards.
Mr. Edwards, would you, would you consider presenting us the 2017-2018 BISD school calendar, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. So, we had to have a Plan A and Plan B, depending on the vote. We're pleased that the DOI plan did pass, therefore, we can bring this new calendar idea to you. I would like to say again, this committee worked hard. Last Thursday, they came up with this calendar idea through a lot of discussion. And we were able to make the adjustments as much as possible, get it re-presented. And I'm happy to say that probably for one of the first few times, we've had a unanimous, pretty much unanimous decision, this is the best calendar of the options that were presented. The things that I would point out that were very important to the members is that week at Thanksgiving, and then the two weeks at the break, that was important to our community because of our students that travel back and forth. The other thing that we talked a lot about was the PD. There's, if you'll notice, the triangles, anything in green is either a professional learning opportunity. So, we have some half-days built in there, so that teachers every month will have some professional development with their campus principals, or provided by the district if needed. So, at this time, we'd recommend approval of the 17-18 Option 3 calendar as presented.
One other thing I wanna say, Barry, before they do that, is I wanna tell the community, and our staff especially, but our community, for, thanking for their patience, because we typically adopt a calendar some two months earlier than we are now, because of the DOI. we typically adopt a calendar some two months earlier than we are now, because of the DOI process, because of the availability to start earlier and all the things you already mentioned. Because we've had people, you talked about, ask superintendent, Ashley and some of, you know, saying, hey, where's the calendar? I'm used to seeing the calendar, and I've I've just been telling them, we're going through a process. But as you said, I I really appreciate the collaboration and the input from the staff. They were able to come up with an option that they felt like met all the needs, but also retained some of those things that everybody's gotten so used to, those extra days for Thanksgiving and that. So I just want to make sure the the community knows that there was a good reason for us waiting for some six to eight weeks. It was because of the DOI process.
I have one question, this has to go through an approval process, right? Now that we have, we have to submit our plan for approval to TEA or?
No, actually, the vote here approves it. Now, what we'll do tomorrow is we we notify the commissioner and TEA that our plan was approved.
Okay, I didn't know if there was a view of that.
And back when we started this, after the vote was taken initially to move forward, we notified them of our intent to take a vote tonight. So they they have our calendar, they know where we are in the process. So like I said, we'll tomorrow, we'll notify the commissioner.
Penae, are there any changes on this calendar that you'd like to recommend? Looks good, all right. They want you to fall asleep over there on us. All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2017-18 BISD school calendar. Let's present it.
I move that we approve the Option 3 of the 2017-18 calendar for BISD.
Have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Calendar's passed, Barry, thank you and everybody for their hard work.
Thanks, Ken.
At this time.
I have one more.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it to you here. Designated contract renewal and resignation date.
So this DOI calendar has a lot of ramifications, implications, as you're seeing. So by by state law, we we are required to set a date of when probationary and term contract employees can resign without penalty. And now that we know what day school starts, this date has to be 45 days prior to that. And so we'd like to designate July 7th, 2017, as the deadline for resignations for without penalty.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Some mood? That we accept the proposal to set July?
7th.
7th.
7th, okay, as the date for notification of contract cancellation.
And renewal.
And and renewal.
Just resignation.
Just resignation, okay, thank you for clarifying that. So we have a motion?
A second.
All right, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Edwards, we appreciate it. All right, Mr. Hudson, thanks for hanging out, and we're going to present us with the proclamation of 2017 instructional materials.
Absolutely. Proclamation 17 requires school districts to evaluate the instructional materials used to teach career and technical education and languages other than English. After evaluating the current instructional materials, the district can choose to update the instructional materials through the materials evaluated by the SBOE, State Board of Education, or other publishers and other resources. Give you an idea, the last time that we adopted a new CTE materials was 12 years ago. The last time that we voted had new LOT materials was 13 years ago. So whenever the committees went through it, they decided we needed new materials. After instructional committees on the campuses and district level completed their evaluation, BISD chose to purchase updated instructional materials from the list of publishers provided through TEA and evaluated through SBOE. The following report shows the publishers selected and the materials that were available from each of those publishers. The report shows the estimated cost for materials selected to the campuses and districts through the evaluation process. The amount of funds available to the instructional material allotment has not yet been provided to the district. So those costs that you see, if something changed, and we didn't get as much money as we think that we're going to get from IMI, we we might have to adjust those. Instructional material allotment amount of new students enrolled will also determine the final textbook order. At this time, are there any questions about proclamation 17? There is one extra piece, there was a new algebraic reasoning class that came out, and it was put into this adoption. And we also have that book in the proclamation 2017.
Do these, I'm just curious, these books come electronically also?
Yes.
Or it's paper?
Some of them are just electronically.
Changing times in education.
Times are changing. Then in the next 12 years, I don't think we'll be doing paper print books.
You cut the the number of books that you ordered or which books you ordered depending on your budget?
So so in current technology and foreign language, a lot of ours are class sets. And so what we tried to do is, we tried to get class sets plus a few to be able to check out. We do have students that need to check out print books. We give the students the opportunity to get these books online, some of them are downloadable, just depends on the publisher. So what we would do is, is we would look at, can we, can we back up on some of our online copies? We would just have to look at the whole thing. We're pretty confident that the money's going to be close to what we think it's going to be. Are there any other questions? If not, I recommend the board approve proclamation 2017 instructional materials as presented.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation 2017 instructional materials as presented.
We have a motion?
A second.
We have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, let's, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Callahan, going to visit with us about some new classrooms.
Yes, one thing we do know we're going to need to include in the 17-18 budget is two, three new portables, two for Cedar Creek Intermediate, one for Cedar Creek Middle for growth. And so what we're asking is, this will be part of the budget process, you'll adopt this amount when the budget's adopted. But we're asking for permission to get those ordered. They won't come in until after July 1st, so they wouldn't be paid until the new budget year. But with timing and getting the areas ready to prep, the the areas prepped, we just need, last year, we ordered them in May, and we ordered them after the budget was adopted in May, and since we're a June adoption this year, we're asking to just order them early. I gave you some prices as far as what the costs are. Approximately $150,000 is the setup for each, for all three of the portables. And then if we do a lease, a lease purchase, which is what we've done with the other ones, that $43,000 is the lease for the first year that would be included in the budget. So just that's what we're asking, kind of like we do when we ask for positions early to get people hired, so. If, just ask that the board approve that, ordering of the new portables in advance of the budget being adopted.
All right, we'll entertain a motion at this time.
Make a motion that we authorize funding for, to order the portable classrooms.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we have a second, any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you, Ms. Callahan, we appreciate it. Looks like the rest, the next thing on the agenda is information, items only, district-wide calendar, also enrollment. At this time, the board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda this evening as allowed by the Texas Government Code 551.074. We will now adjourn, it is 7:30.
We're going to my office.